Welcome everybody joining us live on Zoom, YouTube and Facebook. Thanks for joining us today. Get started in a minute. Yes, so I would like to introduce you to Hannah Driver. She's our Head Accountant at Scribe. She has been with us for five years and helped basically the company grow from one customer to over 750 customers today. So she's been giving training and support to both small and large councils over the years. She's basically come across all kinds of queries, solved all kinds of problems. She doesn't know about accounts at Parish and Town Councils is not worth knowing, I think. And yeah, so thanks for Hannah coming along today to give us an overview. So I'm going to hand over to you Hannah. Let's have a look at the number of responses. We've got quite a few responses there. I'll end the poll before we go to Hannah and then I'll share those results. And as you can see there, workload seems to be one of the biggest issues there. And then yeah, in second place is that it's no help. So with that in mind, over to you Hannah.
Lovely, thanks John. Hi everybody. Share my screen with you and get started. So then today, all about thinking about year end, how to make things hopefully a little bit less stressful, things we can be doing now. Getting ahead of ourselves, getting prepared, et cetera. Four sections to today. Firstly, thinking about what we can do between now and the end of March to prepare. Obviously, we're kind of ramping up now, we've only got a few weeks. There's some things we can think of in terms of preparation. Then looking at the actual AIGAR itself with the real focus on the accounting statements and the numbers part, which is where the real work and collation comes in. Then looking at what do we do once we've got the AIGAR in terms of sending off, publishing it, et cetera. And then a little bit at the end, just thinking about the new financial year as well, the opportunities that that might bring us at the moment. Okay. So firstly, and as we said, thinking about preparing for the year end. I think the first thing there is something that kind of came up just now is that additional work involved. And I know, I think all of you probably are finding that there's probably not enough hours anyway. And that clerking, well, so many things going on, the time that it takes to do it anyway. Often if you're on your own in the role, part time, there's kind of that pull on your hours as it is. So I think the first thing therefore is to recognise that there is likely to be a bit more workload with regards to completing the year end. It's over and above what you would normally do on a month end. So it's important to factor that in, to appreciate it and put some time aside so that you've got some clear time to do it. You're not sort of sniffing, finding little bits of time here and there to do it, but you've got some focus time. And it may also be something to consider in putting some time in between now and the end of the year. Particularly if you've got some work to do on your cash book or you need to prepare some certain things to think about having some time in now. So that you've got an opportunity to get yourself set up as best you can. Secondly, up to date and accurate data, absolutely key, obviously. So all the cashbook information is absolutely key. And if you've got it in there and it's accurate and it's up to date, then it's going to make life so much easier for you at year end. So if you're in a situation where you've got a pile of invoices in the corner that aren't on your cashbook system or your bank rec isn't up to date. Anything like that, those things that you can be doing now to get ahead of yourself. So there's time between now and the end of the month to get, to have a look at that and think about those things. So thinking about monthly bank reconciliation. So we would recommend that you'd always do it monthly at least. So that if you do come across a problem, you've only got one month to deal with. Sometimes we've had people who've tried to do six months in one go and it just doesn't work. And then you've got a lot of data to look back through if it doesn't work out. Okay, so just get that up to date. Obviously, you can be in a situation where you can be up to date as of February now and you've only got that much time period to look at. Also thinking about that as well. So that doesn't necessarily have to be done at the year end. Obviously, if you're back registered and your return date finishes at the end of March, then you have to obviously fit in with the timetables for that. But if you are not that registered and just claiming it back via Form 126, then I'd still recommend that you consider doing a claim in line with the year end. So up to the 31st of March. And although there's a little bit of work around that, it keeps things neat and tidy and you know where you've ended to, to the year end point. So that's another thing that you can be thinking about now. Have I got all the information that I need? Have I got my supplier's VAT numbers recorded? Have I checked my invoicing and I've got my paperwork and behind the scenes in order to match to my claims as well? So these are the kind of things that you might want to do now, particularly if they're not up to date at the moment, just to get yourself ahead a little bit as much as possible. It's also really important to understand what you actually need to do and in what format. Okay, so we speak obviously to lots and lots of clerks. And often our first question or one of our first questions is, do you do your year end receipts and payments or income expenditure? Lots of people don't know or lots of people think they know and it's not the right form. Or they know what they're doing, but they don't know the terminology. So particularly for those of you who are maybe new to this, or maybe you've moved between approaches. I think firstly, it's important to understand the difference. And then later on, when we actually talk about completing the accounting statements themselves, we'll talk about what that actually means for what you're going to do. Okay, so firstly, just to kind of define the two approaches, receipts and payments. Simple form of accounting in that you record what happens, when it happens, regardless of when it relates to. So if you make a payment, you record at the date that you've made that payment, regardless of when that payment relates to, it's happened, so you record it. Okay, it's fairly simple and it's fairly sort of easy to keep a cashbook along those lines. Generally, that's done by councils less than 200,000. You can work in the seats and payments. But having said that, you can opt to use income expenditure. So income and expenditure is slightly more sophisticated and then it takes, in that it takes timings into consideration. So that you consider what has happened, when it actually relates to. Having said all that, generally you'll work on a receipts and payment basis throughout your financial year with the conversion just to income and expenditure at the year end. So it's only the year end point when you need to think about what do I need to adjust, what do I need to think about in addition to what I've done in terms of receipts and payments. And as I said, that's something that we'll look at a bit later on. So also consider as well, if you do move between these approaches, that you may need to restate your prior year. You may have to move between approaches. So if you've gone over 200,000 for three consecutive years, you'd need to move to income expenditure. But if you've just gone over because of one year, you've had additional grant, for example, it's pushed you over, but then you go back to under the 200,000 threshold, you wouldn't need to move to any. But bear in mind that if you do, then you'd need to restate when you complete your accounting statements, the current year and the prior year. You show need to use the same approach. You just be mindful of that if you need to, because there's some work to be done to your prior year as well. And again, that is something that you could be doing now. If there's any issues with last year, you can look to address them now in readiness. Also important to understand in terms of what the auditor will be expecting and what you need to complete. So this is again, this is key if you are new clerk in the role and you've not done a year end before. Also, maybe if you're not that confident or if you've moved councils. So you may have done your year end at a smaller council or a larger council and if you vice versa flipped over, it may be slightly different what you need to do. So make sure absolutely clear what you need to do and what level of audit needs to have and what that involves. So that you'll get that information coming through from your auditor. But you can also go to their website and there's some useful guides and sort of flow charts to show you what exactly you need to do. And also get a copy if you haven't already of the J-PAD Practitioner's Guide, because that's absolutely keen, helping you sort of taking you through the completion of the AIGAR. Explaining the relevant sections and what you need to consider and how to complete it. Okay, as I've said again, need to restate the year, just consider that. Not only because you've moved between accounting approaches, but there may be another reason. If you're, if the auditor picked up an issue with your accounts at the end of last year and they stated you need to make some changes to what will now be your prior year. Make sure obviously that you've done that. Or often it seems to happen that if you're a new clerk in the role and you look back at what's been done previously, often things are found that might not be quite right and then restatements required. So make sure if you do need to restate, that you've got to the position where you know what that's going to be. So that therefore your box one, your opening balance for this year is the correct starting point. Because it just makes things easy when you then start thinking about collating this year's information. Okay. We're thinking about now moving on to the actual AIGAR itself. So once we get beyond the 31st of March, we can start thinking about filling all this in. Okay, because our year end is finished. So just as a quick overview for those of you who may not done one before, the AIGAR, the annual governance and accountability return for the period, the 1st of April, 31st of March. Obviously, we're approaching the 31st of March rapidly now. So focus is all on that. Three sections, the internal audit report, section one, the annual governance statement and section two, the accounting statements, which mainly is what I want to focus on today. But firstly though, the internal audit report will be in line with the summarised conclusions from your internal auditor. So you're going to need to get your internal auditor to come in and review procedures that you have, the controls that you have, the certain things that you do within the council. And they come and look at the adequacy of those controls, et cetera, the effectiveness and look at all those different areas in there to allow you therefore to then answer at least this tick and boxes that are taken directly from last year's copy of the AIGAR and to allow you to then answer yes or no based on their findings. Okay, the scope of the audit and sort of how regularly you might have it done will depend on the size and what happens within your council. But at the very least, it will allow you to answer yes and no to these questions. Okay, so very much really just apart from organising, having your internal to come in, it's just a review of things that hopefully are happening anyway as part of the sort of procedures and controls that were within your council and happening throughout the year anyway. Okay, that's very much in line as well with the annual governance statement, which is section one as well. So that's to review the effectiveness of your internal controls. And again, it's yes, no responses to your statements. So again, this is an extract again from the AIGAR. And again, it says yes, no responses that you need to give. So hopefully again, you're in a position where those things are happening. You've got these effective management tools that allow you to answer yes. You must be able to answer yes with appropriate evidence to support it. You don't have to provide that evidence to the auditor, but you must be able to support that your yes is that that is indeed taking place. If not, then you would need to give a no response because you're not able to say obviously that those things are happening. And if it is a no, it's as, you know, you'd need to provide some further information to your auditor as to why that is and what's going to be done about it. So identify the weaknesses or the area that it's lacking and explain how that's going to be resolved in the future. Okay, so fairly well interlinked, there's actually a couple in this question itself, number six, I believe, that they've actually had your internal audit coming in. So it's quite heavily interlinked and it's all about the management tools, the processes, the procedures, the controls that are in place. And are they, are they actually, are they actually happening? Okay. That then takes us on to section two, the accounting statement, the numbers bit. So this is the sort of where the real work happens because you now need to take the information that you've been putting into your cashbook in order to collect the data to fill in these boxes. Okay, so again, I've taken this from last year's AIGAR, I had a look this morning, but the latest ones aren't up to date. So obviously, when you do get it, you're going to have March 22 on the right hand side. So this current year, that's about to finish compared to the prior year. And as I said before, they need to use the same accounting approach. Bear that in mind if you've moved between. Okay, firstly, I want to talk about the differences between receipts and payments and income expenditure, completing it. And then on the moment, I'm going to talk about some things to be mindful of when you're filling in the boxes. So going back to receipts and payments then, this is fairly simple as we said before. And the nice thing is if you're working in receipts and payments, it's fairly straightforward that if you've got a good cashbook, it's up to date, it's accurate, it's reconciled to the bank. Then pretty much it's a case of taking your figures directly from the cashbook. Okay, it's just literally the collation of what you've put into your cashbook. Obviously, it needs to be split up again over the relevant boxes, but the core information that you've got is there. Okay, if you're working in income expenditure, as we identified before, it's thinking about the timings and what actually relates to when it happens. So there's some more work to be done. So you'd have your receipts and payments cashbook and likely that you'll just convert to income expenditure at end of the year. Now, to do that, the first thing to do is to exclude VAT, because VAT will constitute either a debtor or a creditor. Either you'll be owed some VAT or you may possibly owe it if you're back registered. And so those, the VAT is not included in the figures that you put into the boxes. You'll use the next figures, whereas in receipts and payments, you just take the gross figures, total payments goes into book six, et cetera. So income expenditure, exclude the VAT. And you also need to add adjustments. So this is where you're identifying things that have happened, either that won't happen now that you've not yet paid for or things that you might have paid ahead, et cetera. So things that need to be taken into account of to get the year in line with what actually relates to this year itself. Okay, so mainly now I've noted creditors and debtors, but you may have other elements of adjustments. So here's some example ones from my fictitious Scribe Parish Council. Excuse me, so just some things I've put in. So I mentioned creditors and there's also accruals and they're very similar, but just to sort of the difference between them. Accruals are where you expect something to happen, but you might not yet have the invoice. So you've had the goods or services, you know you're going to need to pay for something, but you might not have the invoice and know exactly what it's going to be. But you want to recognise that there's going to be a cost element that you're expecting in the accounts. My example here is that John Smith's come and done some additional work to the hedges. He hasn't invoiced me, I know he's done it and I know there'll be a cost associated to that.
One second Hannah.
Yep, sure.
Well done with dealing with the Covid cough there, by the way.
Yes, I'm sorry about that.
Someone's asked just to slow down a little bit. I know you're trying to.
Okay, sorry, yeah.
A little bit.
No worries.
Sarah did, all right, cheers.
Okay, no problem. So yes, excuse my, my kind of cough. Yeah, so accruals are where we've not had the invoice, but we know there's going to be a cost associated that we're expecting to have to put in. Okay, but then that's related to creditors where we've got invoices. We know we're not going to be paying them to the new financial years, that might be April or beyond. But we know that the cost relates to this financial year. That's fairly easy to deal with. You're likely to have pile of invoices that you know due to your payment approval processes, you're not going to pay, paying until April. Okay, you also may have instances where you've paid things ahead. So you might have prepayments where you've paid for something, but you've not actually had the benefit yet. So for example, I've got, we've paid £500 to my local builder for some building work. For whatever reason, that's been delayed, it's not going to take place. And therefore I want to remove that cost from my current year's accounts, because actually I'm not going to now have the benefit onto the new financial year. Okay, also got to think about any on the income side that you may have. So if you raise invoices, have you got any debtors? Have you got any invoices that haven't yet been paid that where you've provided the goods or services to your customers and they've not paid yet? So I've got their allotment fees, they've had their plot, they've been using the plot theirs of yet, they haven't paid me for it. So therefore they're my debtors. But also on the flip side of that, I might have an example of where someone has paid for something, but they've not yet had the benefit of it. So if you have a hall that you hire out, someone's paid for you because they're going to hire it in the summer, let's say. But they're not, they've not had the benefit yet, but you've had the income, therefore you're going to adjust for it to make it, to make that relevant. In my example there, I've got Mr Smith, he's paid quarter one rent to me, I've received that in this current year. That relates to the new financial year and therefore I'm going to adjust for that. So it's thinking about all those things that need to move in order to make the timings correct. Okay, just going back to that previous screen then. So quite a lot of adjustments to think about there. In the most part, it's likely that you'll mostly have creditors where you'll have invoices that you recognise that you need to pay. Okay, but it was also thinking about what other things have happened or haven't happened that I need to take account of in terms of making it work. Okay, also when you're putting your adjustments in, there's a couple of other considerations to give. Firstly is the materiality, so the value of your adjustments. Are you going to set a level at which you don't adjust things on them? If you've got the odd invoice for stationery where you've got some pens and some staples, for example, are you going to say, we're not going to put that everything over £50 or £100 is what we're going to put an adjustment in for? Obviously, once you've set that, be consistent, it will likely depend on sort of the size of your council. Also consider the regularity as well. So if you've got things that happen regularly, you may not need to adjust for them. If you have a grounds maintenance contractor coming in every month, you pay them a month in arrears. So March would be paid in April, in theory, that's a creditor. But if that happens every single month and therefore at the start of the year, you've got March's invoice paid in April, you're going to end up with 12 months' worth in your accounts. And therefore you don't need to think about adjusting. It would only be if they went over and above their normal level of work in March and you felt that you needed to put something in for additionally for that. So obviously, I'll make loads and loads of work for yourself unnecessarily, so be mindful of those, those further considerations. And also importantly, make sure last year's adjustments are reversed. So if you've got software, it's very likely that it'll do that for you. If not, and you're doing it manually, spreadsheet, even in a book, for example, obviously make sure last year's are the best. Thinking about the individual boxes then from that first slide we looked at from the actual extract of the AIGAR itself. All the boxes to fill in, there's just some things for each of those that I want to just point out, things to consider as you're working through it. So box one, balance is brought forward, ensure that's equal to box seven of the previous year. So that's fairly simple, you know, straightforward that you're going to do that. But do you make sure particularly if you have had a few attempts previous last year's of the final accounts of what was going to go into your, your actual accounting statements? That you, your prior year is actually what was submitted to the auditor. In examples before, they, it's not actually what went to the auditor as your prior, so make sure that ties up. And particularly if you've needed to restate and that has affected box seven of last year, that you therefore have the correct box one for this year. Okay, box two, precept or rates or levies. So that's precept only for councils, don't be confused by the rates, levies for reference, that's drainage. Also just purely your precept payment that you've received. And be also be mindful if you receive the precept along with anything else from your authority, that it's just the precept that's gone into box two. Box three, total other receipts. So that's everything else that you've received in terms of income. But make sure you don't include any bank transfers or movements of money. So if you show in your cashbook, bank transfers as a receipt and a payment on one side, make sure that you don't include that in your total receipts figure. Exclude that if working in income expenditure, so that's mindful of all the boxes really, but I've noted that in there. And also if you've had credit note refund overpayment back from a supplier, that is not a receipt entry, it's a negative payment. So if you've had some money back from, you've overpaid somebody, they've given the money back to you, despite the fact that you've received it, it's not a receipt. It is the correction of an overpayment, so therefore it needs to deduct it from box six. So just be mindful if you've had, because obviously if you've had some large ones, it's going to potentially overstate your receipts and would be incorrect. Box four then is your staff costs. So out of your total payments, be aware of the guidance as to what can be included. That changed last year, so hopefully you're at full buffet with that, with no need to change from last year. But it's just your core staff costs, so your salary, your NI, pension tax, et cetera, not things such as travel allowance, anything like extra such as that. Okay, to be clear about that. Box five, loan interest. So that's fairly straightforward, fairly self-explanatory, but again separately from your other payments. And then box six, all other payments. So kind of the flip side of what we said about receipts is everything else, but don't include bank transfers, movements of money from the other side. Again, exclude that. And again, be mindful of a credit note or refund that you've had from suppliers. But also if you've had to give refunds back to your customers, so if customers come in and paid for something that you then have to refund, despite the fact that you've made a payment to them. That is a negative receipt entry because you'd received the money initially. Okay, so just sort of think about what was actually going on, what effect does it have? So that you don't end up with overstated boxes three receipts or boxes six payments. Box is seven then, balance is carried forward and it's just making sure that it adds up. And that sounds many self-explanatory, but again, just make sure that it tops up correctly. So box is one, your opening balances plus two, the precept plus three, the other receipts, less your payments, so your staff cost, your loan repayments and anything else. Okay, or the other payments basically, so that's box seven. Box eight is the total value of cash and short term investments. So that needs to be equal to your bank rec. Okay, as I said right at the beginning, you won't be able to start your year end process without a balancing back rec position. So that's key and that needs to be box eight. Okay, if you're working in receipts and payments, it's a nice little check at this point, because your box seven figure needs to be equal to your box eight. So what you've recorded in the AIGAR is going to balance to your bank position because you've put everything into it. And it's all, the black section is including, it will be the same figure. If you're working in income expenditure, box seven and box eight will be different, that's correct. And it will be different by the value of your adjustments that you put through your creditors, that your debt and your debtors that you'll need to identify. Box nine then is your fixed assets and your long term investments. So again, that's something that you could look at now if your asset register isn't up to date and you know you've had some new assets when you dispose of some items. So again, that's something that you could be looking at getting up to date now. Make sure you're consistent in reporting of the total. So obviously, most of the time it's the original purchase value or your acquisition cost. But if you've moved to something like the current value, make sure again that your approach is the same. So if you do that, you might need to restate and make sure obviously you've got your asset register with all that information. So in the same way that your cashbook needs to hold all the information that feeds into the boxes that we've just talked about. You'll have an asset register that supports the value that you're going to be showing in box nine. And often we get asked about this, that there's no accounting adjustments to assets and no depreciation. But you may have been, you know, used in previous other sort of more commercial businesses, no depreciation, it's just the core cost of that, that's it. And then if it's disposed, it's taken off. Box 10, borrowings, again fairly self-explanatory. So that is your loans often from PWLB and update the figure to the amount owed at the year end. So the 31st of March, what is the amount that's owed back and fill that box in as well. So alongside the AIGAR, when you thought about all those things there, there's some additional information that you will be providing. So your bank rec, as we talked about, absolutely key to agree to box eight. Reconciliation between box seven and eight. So that's if you're working in income expenditure, as I said, it will be different and you'll need to provide a summary of the debtors and creditors to show how that has been calculated. Okay, and you'll also need to provide an explanation of variances if you have variances over 15% for boxes two, three, four, five, six, nine and 10. Or also if your box seven, which is your funds, we're talking about your total funds at the end of the year, is more than twice box two, which is your precept. That basically mean that you're holding a lot more funds, more than double funds of your precept value. And that would need to therefore be explained, it would be because you've got reserves. That's absolutely fine to hold reserves, you'll have a general reserve that shouldn't be more than between six and 12 months equivalent to your running basically the precept. But you can have other earmarked capital reserves. Obviously, if you're saving up to build a community centre, for example, you may have very, very, very large reserves. And that's might be why your box seven is more than twice box two. That's absolutely fine, you just need to provide an explanation as to why that is. And when you, if you do need to explain your variances, be key that you need to give full numerical explanation, breakdown of information. It's not just enough to say, well, we've got higher receipts because we hired out a hall a bit more. You need to give that some breakdown, clear examples, explanations to what's going on with all that. Okay, then moving on to the signing of the documents and the publication requirements. Excuse me, so this is what you're going to do with the AIGAR once it's there. Okay, what's going to happen with it? So firstly, the RFO is going to sign the accounting statements, then you're going to have your meeting in order to see the proof, et cetera, the items on there. So that the elements of the AIGAR itself, at this point, if you're able to satisfy exempt from audit, you can do that by approving and signing the certificate. So exempting is basically being under 25K. There are some other criteria with regards to how long you've been in formation and also whether you've had any issues with the auditor. So obviously be completely clear on whether you meet all those criteria. But if you do, great, you can exempt yourself from audit, save a little bit of audit fee and then sign off the statements as well. That will then allow the RFO to set the commencement date for exercise of the public rights. And that basically means that accounting records must be made available to be by any interested person. Electors can also raise questions or make objections to them, but you have to have an approved and published AIGAR before that inspection period starts, which obviously is why you need to have your meeting in order to do all of that. The period must be 30 working days and it includes the first 10 working days of July. So either needs to start mid-June to have that at the end, or start from early July so that you've got them at the beginning. So it's all about making sure that you're aware of your timings and that you're making sure that you've got not only enough time to complete the AIGAR, but also that you've got the meeting to prove it, et cetera. Is at the right point to allow you then to set those dates as well. Then it's what to do with in terms of the auditor. So if you are exempt from the audit, then you just send off the certificate, they don't need anything else. You know, you've done the AIGAR, et cetera, all the auditor needs is the certificate of exemption. If you're not exempt, then you assemble the documentation to your auditor, so the AIGAR and the associated information, so your variances, your bank rec, details of privacy and any other information. So anything else you'd need to provide where you needed to restate or anything that's gone along with any issues with your annual governance, et cetera, that you need to provide, you'd send all that off to them. And then you can publish your documents. Okay, so if you're exempt from audit, you can publish everything that you've got there. So you've got basically what makes up the AIGAR along with the supporting documents and along with the arrangements for the public rights and then the details. So you've got all that information that you've then got that you can then put on your website, et cetera. If you've sent your information to your auditor, external auditor, then you can publish your documents. But obviously, you'll be awaiting the final sign off and certificate back from them. So generally, you would sign and publish your AIGAR, but also a declaration that as of yet, those accounts were yet unaudited, waiting that coming back from them. Okay, then it's just a case of when you do get it back, you update it with the conclusion of the audit, update it. And then if there's any amendments, when you, notes, et cetera. And now obviously their certificate as well alongside it as well. So a little bit of work to do, but it's just kind of sort of dotting of the i, crossing of the t's to finish all that off at the end. So a little bit of work to do, but it's just kind of sort of dotting of the i, crossing of the t's to finish all that off at the end. Okay. And then the last little bit, just a quick to look ahead to the new financial year itself. I think before Christmas, it was all about budgets and thinking about new financial year, getting ready for that. And now in a situation where we're sort of holding the core of the end of this financial year and getting ready for that. Okay. So but now is a good time, if you've got an opportunity to set up your cashbook for the new financial year. It's likely that you're going to have to be sort of doing two years alongside each other. You'll be working through the process of completing the current financial year, but you'll also be wanting to start putting information into your cashbook for your new financial year. Sometimes small accounts may have the luxury of being able to finish one before starting the other, but often you'll need to do both. Okay. So now might be a good time to objectively review your cashbook, the way that you keep your accounts records, particularly as you work through this process. If some of the things we talked about is really hard, if it's actually really complicated, long, when you do that claim or collect, collate the information that you need for your AIGAR. Is it now time to think about, excuse me, is your accounting system fit for purpose? Does it still meet the needs that you have? Have you had training on it or you just handed a laptop and you had to just go work it out for yourself? Does it suit the needs of your council? It might have been great five years ago, but actually now you do lots more different things and it doesn't take those things into consideration. How could you improve it? It might be a change of medium. So you might want to look to software or move to a spreadsheet if you still write it in a book. And a key part of it is the coding structure as well. Okay. So thinking about how to structure your cashbook based on your council budget, your preset breakdown. That sounds really obvious, I suppose, but we see a lot of the time when people come along and they have a lovely budget breakdown. It's all broken down into separate codes with budget amounts allocated against them. And then I have a cashbook that bears no resemblance to that budget. It'll all be lumped into different codes. And if somebody wanted to analyse what will be actually spent against that budget line, it's actually really difficult. So have a cashbook where you allocate your payments and receipts out to your budget codes. And also think about grouping codes together that you might want to report on. So for example, for your village hall, if you want to see what income have we had at the village hall, but what, how much has it cost it to run it? And then that's something that you're interested in and you want to be able to see that easily. Also think about things such as additional codes to analyse the data further. So if you haven't got enough, if you've got one code for open spaces, actually be really helpful to understand what you spend on grass cutting, trees, hedges, the play park, the rec ground, whatever it may be, but actually that's all been there together at the moment. Think about, do I want to split that down further? Or when it was set up, did we add every single code we could think of and a lot of them aren't used and it's been this great long huge cashbook that we just don't need that information. Thinking about what you can do with it. So this is a real, it's small extract of something that we've got set up online is that thinking about grouping things together. So I've got my little admin section, got my town hall section and I can see how much if I hired out, how much is it costing me to run to group things together? Make it relevant to the budget to allow you to analyse it out. And also think about, do you, have you got enough information in the cashbook itself as well? So do you record invoice numbers, invoice dates, or are you often finding yourself having to go back and look through paperwork to find information that you need, that numbers, et cetera? Would it be helpful to get more information to the cashbook? So you've got that sort of hub of information that's really useful to you. And that was just the last thing I just wanted to think about, an opportunity now to maybe make things a little bit easier. So when we come to this in a year's time again, that hopefully it'll be even more simple. Super. Thank you very much. I will stop sharing and back to you.
Great. Thank you very much, Hannah. So there was lots of information shared there. Can be very overwhelming. Don't worry, we'll be sharing all the content with you over email. So you get the web recording, you get the slides. And also if we don't manage to answer all your questions, we'll answer those in the email. So we'll go to questions in five minutes and I'm just going to hand over now to Evan, who will share his observations of mastering year end. So over to you, Evan.
Thanks very much. So hopefully everyone can hear me. Okay. I'm just going to share my screen with you. Now, so I'm the sales manager at Scribe and the reason that's sort of relevant really is I've spent the past year or so speaking to several hundred councils across the UK. I have a couple of observations that that we've made within the business about you're kind of the the situation that a lot of councils find themselves in. And I also have three recommendations that I want to give you about how to really master the year end process. So we'll start with some of the observations now. And some of you might know my lovely colleague, Jo Peters. She's a Silver Quarified Clerk from Suffolk. She's taught me everything she knows about parish council accounting as well as Hannah. And what we've put together here is the kind of hierarchy of needs for council accounts. Now, you can see here down at the bottom, we have administering, obviously keeping track of your transactions, your bank reconciliations, your VAT reclaim, that kind of thing. It's all absolutely crucial. It's also very important to monitor your spending throughout the year. Keeping track of those budgets and seeing how they compare to your actual spending. And the reason really for doing all of this is to get through that governance, you know, to create your year end AIGAR reports and to get through the actual audit at the end. And so this is kind of our, our observation of the hierarchy of needs of what you need to kind of have a good handle on within a council. Now, what I've observed from speaking to, like I say, hundreds of councils within my team, you know, we've spoken to probably 500 or so councils in the past year alone, what we have observed is what we're calling the cashbook crisis, where so many councils are not investing at all in a good cashbook that actually works for them. And so what that really leads to is, you know, if you don't have the first building block, then the rest of it just becomes really difficult. So we're observing that loads and loads of councils, they don't have that investment in the sort of day to day administration. And so things like, you know, doing your VAT reclaim, your budget reporting, and especially the AIGAR becomes a really daunting process where that, you know, as you can see, the stress of it, the anxiety, just, just the kind of the build up throughout the year of dread, just for this period, just kind of becomes a little bit overwhelming. And it does feel almost like councils are kind of leaving this until the last minute. And then there's a, you know, loads of overtime and a sort of dead stretch heat, you're running straight for that AIGAR at the end of the year. Now, my first recommendation, I have three recommendations to give you is firstly, think cashbook first. That's, that's the most important thing. So you know, from Hannah's training, what you can see there is it's absolutely vital to think about year end throughout the whole year. You know, your, your daily administration, you're actually working on managing the accounts. That needs to sort of tie into your monitoring and all of these things need to contribute to your governance and your accountability. Now, there's, there's no point in having a cashbook that doesn't work for you because then you end up in a situation that I've just talked about with the cashbook crisis. Now, my second recommendation is download our year end checklist. It's completely free and it will give you a step by step guide on how to get through the year end process. You can see there's a link here. I'm sure my colleague John will, will post that into the chat as well. It's just a PDF. Download that. It'll give you a good idea of how to get through the year end process. Now, my final recommendation is to have a look at Scribe. It's an accounting system specifically designed for local councils. And some of the main points about it really are it's easy to use, you can access it anywhere. I could go on all day about the benefits of Scribe, but really what it's all about is your daily administration and monitoring, Scribe will do for you and it will also do the governing for you. So all you really need to do as the user is just load up your transaction, reconcile them throughout the year with, with your bank statements and that's it. From there, Scribe will be able to do everything for you. So I would just like you to imagine if we were to do all of that for you, you know, that doing the year end process, all of your reports, all of your, your VAT reclaim instantly within your, your cashbook, what would you do with that, that time that you free up within, you know, sort of March through to May when you're, you're previously focusing on the year end process? If that was all automated, what would you do with your time? I have an example of one of our customers, Sally Ferguson. She's the clerk to Lymnsham Parish Council. Now, she invested in Scribe with her council. They decided to invest in a good cashbook that works for them. And with the time that she was able to save throughout this period, she actually applied for a bunch of grants. She, it was, you know, quite lucky to, to receive a brilliant grant of 50,000, which is huge for a small council like Lymnsham. And they actually opened a cafe, which is, you know, employs local youth. So that's, that's just a really good example of the kind of thing that Scribe can do for you, if you invest in a really good cashbook. And finally, I just want to say, this is our support team. They're all very lovely, lots of smiling faces, as you can see. If you are interested in finding out how a cashbook can actually really help you to, to take the stress out of your year end accounting, get in touch with us. I'd be more than happy to, to give you a brief demonstration of Scribe and talk you through some of the benefits specific to your council. And that's it for me.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Evan. So we're going to do questions now. We've got 17 minutes. We've had a few questions already asked in the chat, which have also been answered, but there's still some open questions. So I'm going to go through those now. The people that have asked, oh, mind you, actually asking them, although you've asked them over chat, just unmute yourself when I call you up. Show yourself on camera and ask Hannah. Otherwise, then we'll open it up and it'll just basically put your hand up and then we'll get over to you. So Zihan, this Han, you asked a question. Are you there?
I am there and it's Zishan.
Oh, Zishan, sorry.
You're making it more complicated.
Zishan, Zishan, there you go. So over to you.
Yeah, I just, I've never been clear as to whether to include the VAT reclaim amount in the figures or not.
Yes, you do. Well, are you, so you're on receipts and payments, are you?
I am now. I always used to be income and expenditure. So I'm hoping it's going to be a lot simpler this year.
Yeah. If it's receipts and payments, it's really nice and simple because it's just everything. So your receipts will include, if you've had a VAT reclaim, that goes in your box three as well.
Brilliant. Thank you.
Good. And then Emily and then Sue and then Monica. So Emily, are you there? Emily Young?
Yeah. Hi, I am. I'm sorry. I'm not on video because my connection's not very good. I just wondered, the JPG Practitioners Guide, I've got March 2021, is that going to be the current for this, you know?
Yeah, there's not a new one yet. So that would still be current for now. Yeah.
Brilliant. Thank you.
But the, yeah, they're working on a new one, section five, aren't they? Actually, our next Scribe events with Eleanor Green. She's an auditor. She's working on section five. She's actually given an update on the changes. So I'll drop a link on that in a minute on, on, on those talks. Highly recommend coming along.
Thank you.
Sue Woodman. Are you there, Sue?
Yes, yes, I, yes, I am. My question was very similar to the first question. My internal auditor treats VAT refunds as a negative payment, which totally confuses me every year.
Okay, no, it would be an income. So though it may make sense to learn in regards to what I was talking about and actually like refunds and credit notes coming back in terms of the VAT reclaim, that is an income item that appears in box three, if you're receipts and payments.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. And then we've got Monica and Hillary up next. So Monica, are you there?
Hi, I just wanted to clarify something. What is the definition of long term investment? Is it longer than two years or longer than one year?
One, one year.
Okay, thank you. So if one, anything longer than one year would go to asset register.
That's correct. Yeah. Box nine.
Okay. Box nine. Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
Okay, Hillary Martin.
Ah, thanks very much, Hannah. That was really informative. Yeah, a quick question on exercise of public rights. I've just had my interim audit with my internal auditor. And he's put it down as a non-compliance because the period of public rights was 32 days last year, not 30. Is that a little bit harsh as it was over?
I'd say it was very harsh really, since you go for more and there's no less, I can understand it. I, so Joe's got any thoughts on that? He deals with this, or she had a got her own houses and does that.
Yeah. No, I, I think you should query that actually, Hillary, because I understand if you didn't give the full 30 days, but the fact that you went just a couple of days over, and as long as she was within the correct dates, then I don't think that you should have been sanctioned for that. No, not at all.
No, it's the only thing he could find. So I think he's nitpicking, but that's useful to know. Thank you. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Cool. That's Hillary Dunn. Yeah. So Karen Barker, you've got a question? Are you there, Karen Barker?
Yeah, hi. No, my question was if you join the Scribe, does that actually include the internal audit or do we need another person to do the internal audits as well?
I, I could perhaps answer that. So maybe I'll get it wrong. I don't know. So Hannah and Jo, correct me. So yes, it doesn't include an internal auditor. But one thing is it makes it, Scribe makes it much easier for auditing, auditing to be done remotely. You just give them a login, which is free and then they can log in and have a look at your accounts in Scribe. And we can also recommend auditors for you. So we have a, like a few auditors that we work with that can do that and are familiar with Scribe. Cool. Um, Kate Rickson.
My, my question's been, been answered. Can I just contribute to the issue about internal auditors? I believe that the JPG guide says that your account system provider is not allowed to also be your internal auditor. So you have to have separate ones.
Yeah, cool. Thanks for that. Lydia.
Lydia doesn't actually have a microphone. I'll just read out Lydia's question. So what Lydia would like to know is with the, the AIGAR process, so if a resident has issues with the AIGAR slash councils activities, can they go straight to the external auditor with queries or are they supposed to go through the parish council?
I'm afraid they go straight to the internal, external auditor. They do sometimes go to the parish or town council, but I've known circumstances where members of the public go straight to the external auditor with their queries and I'm afraid there is a cost with that as well. So yeah, it's a bit of a, not very nice one.
Thanks, Jo.
Okay, I, do we have any more questions? Put your hand up. Otherwise I'll kind of sign off. I've got a few things to share which are really useful to you. I'll just sort my admin out there. So I've shared a bunch of links, further support and training. So I highly recommend, I can do a screen share here, that you guys join Clark's Corner on Facebook. This is a a group that we, no, we administer. And it's just basically a forum to allow, allow clerks to ask questions. It's highly, let me just hit refresh there. It's a highly active community, has over 1,300 members. And oh, let's, yeah, yeah, I can't. I was going to show you some conversation, but something's not going quite right there. Oh, here we go. So you can see, just to prove you how active it is, it's just people posting questions there about delegating powers, 13 comments there. Someone about longstanding chairman, three comments. And these are all in the last, last day. So lots of clerks asking questions there and lots of clerks giving answers. So I highly recommend joining that. So I've dropped it in the chat there. There's also one for the councillors we've got, not, not as big, but still very active. So if you have any councillors, recommend them looking at that. And then finally, a highly, this is kind of the follow up event from out, this kind of ends our series of free webinars that we're providing to people on mastering year end. So we've got Eleanor Green. She's an experienced auditor. And she's actually working on the section five of JPG and she's going to be talking about that. I've dropped the links in there. So recommend signing up. That, that should be, she's an interesting lady. She's got a lot to say. And yes, it'd be a great event to do that. Just checking if, was there any final questions there, Evan? Before I sign off, we sign off?
No, don't believe so.
All right. Well, everybody will be emailing you all the content, all those links we've shared. Have a great day and thanks to Hannah and Evan again. Cheers. Bye bye.